Order, please rise. The pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
I am proud of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank Carol Chandler for providing this originally. You wanted to use that, but then you can just play. Is a clerk, please call the roll.
Alvin Bouillon.
Here.
Gariga.
Here.
Hollering.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Moranti.
Here.
Nissan.
Here.
Rosenthal.
Sauer.
Here.
Wollo.
Here.
Presenty Pietro.
Here.
Morem present.
Motion to dispense with the reading minutes of July 9th and the July 17th meeting and place those minutes on file. Can I have a motion and a second?
Rob.
Second? Calvin? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion to dispense with the reading of the city treasurer's report as of July 31st, 2018, place it on file. Can I have a motion made by, I'm sorry, can I have a motion and a second? Eileen? Second? Rich? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The committee reports are on your desks. May I have a motion and a second to place the committee reports on file? First, an introduction. Rob? Adewan? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Excuse me. On your desks, as from our last meeting, as you know, there's a communication from the mayor vetoing the first version of proposal of the law introduction number four about vacant buildings. We'll vote on the revised version later in the committee. May I have a motion and a second to receive that communication and place it on file? An introduction? Eileen? A second? Rich? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have bills for August on our desks. Any questions? This is a new resolution from the council. All right, then can I have an introduction? A second? Rob? A second? Eileen? Roll call vote, please.
Alvin Bouillon.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
Next is a resolution appointing a commissioner, not a, but three commissioners of deeds. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Bouillon.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
Next resolution is accepting a donation on behalf of the Hudson Fire Department. We are re-adopting a fund balance policy which we discussed at the informal. Any more questions before we vote? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Bouillon.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
Now, we're accepting a donation on behalf of the Hudson Fire Department for fifty dollars. A roll call vote.
Alvin Bouillon.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
A resolution accepting another donation on behalf of the Hudson Fire Department in memory of the late Mark Graziano for fifty dollars. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Bouillon.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
The next resolution is a request to the county of Columbia to engage in feasibility study with us in the city on the acquisition and use of John L. Edwards School for city, county, municipal offices. A roll call vote?
Yes, may I ask? If, then, if this feasibility study does, funds attached with it, so totally separate from the resolution.
Sure. Let me turn you right now. Alvin Bouillon.
Aye.
Gariga.
Um, I didn't get a chance to speak before we were voted because I wanted to say something after Rich, but, um, you know, I do support this, but I just wanted to be known that I support it because I think it would be a great idea to have the county and the city combined in JLE and possibly putting the youth department as well because we all know how that building is deteriorating. Also, I don't know if everyone is aware of the situation with the Columbia Opportunities Head Start Program. They have been a part of the school district for about nineteen years using their facilities for their two classrooms for a Head Start Program, and being that they're closing on the 30th, they have no place to go. Um, I know this will be a while, but this would also be helpful for them as well to continue their services. Um, being that John L. is closed on the 30th of this month, they will be out and there are parents that are depending on this program this year, and they are desperately looking for a place. And I.
Do you have a contact person at Head Start?
Yes, Tina Sharp. She is the executive director who also did a presentation from the invitation of Eileen Hollering.
The next resolution. No, sorry.
I said aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
The next resolution. No, sorry.
I said aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to ex, these are all new resolutions, so if you want to discuss them first, authorizes the mayor to execute agreements with paychecks for payroll services. Uh, let me say that if you were, as you learned at the finance committee meeting, this is the change in services is a wash ultimately with better services. Yes.
From my understanding, coming from the city attorney, with these new services, if we could move forward with this, it would be a less fee from the last?
It wouldn't be an increase.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please. And kudos to treasurer.
Yes, for putting this together, which is great because it's going to save time, it's going to automate the whole process, um, using the paychecks. It sounds, after coming out of the finance committee, it's actually going to be a big
Roll call, unless there's other comments? Questions? Roll call vote, please. Oh, sorry. I don't too much in the second. Rob? Second?
I'll second.
And now.
I'll second.
Oh, I thought you did. Rich?
Rich.
Roll call vote, please.
Alvin Bouillon.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
The next resolution is a transfer of funds within the public works cemetery service department accounts. This is the sort of standard monthly transfer that Rob puts in for this meeting. May I have an introduction? Unless there's questions? May I have an introduction and a second? Eileen? Calvin? A roll call vote, please.
Alvin Bouillon.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
The last new resolution is transfer funds between the youth department personal services account. Uh, I think it's evident from your document what's being done here, it's a pay for the lifeguards and the services concession. Do I have an introduction? A second? Rob? Tiffany? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Bouillon.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
Last new resolution is transfer funds between the youth department personal services account. Uh, I think it's evident from your document what's being done here, it's a pay for the lifeguards and the services concession. Do I have an introduction? A second? Rob? Tiffany? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Bouillon.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nissan.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Upstanding.
Carry.
Roll call law number six is about the Energide New York Benefit Financing Program, and Rich explained this at the informal, if there's any questions remaining.
In the package from the informal, there's a memo on the back page of this legal law that says Energy Improvement Corporation. It explains the differences, the changes that, just to conform with the state agencies. Um, right now, after the, after the finance meeting, I don't think any businesses are using this program, but the idea is that if the state has a program out there which will help allow businesses to finance some renewable energy products. So, that is available, and there are state grants and funds available, but they've changed some of the requirements, they've actually made them more open, um, so this is just keeping it in line with the state.
Do I have a motion and a second, please? Introduction and a second? Rich? Second? Is that a left?
Did we just lay that last week?
I thought we did, that's why I put it here.
Motion, second, to lay it on your desk.
Okay, motion and a second to lay it on our desk. Does anyone go to a public hearing? No?
I was writing on the desk.
Okay. Okay. So, a motion to put this local law on our desks. Can I have a introduction and a second, please? Rich and Rob? All in favor? Same paper, saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vacant buildings law? We need the same introduction and second to put it on our desks.
Well, I just want to say, of course, that I worked hard with this, and I want to thank the legal committee as well for putting effort to revise this and also reaching out to Craig Haye, from my understanding from the city attorney, who also approves this, who will be enforcing this, so thank you.
Do I have an introduction? Yeah, Craig, I'm sorry, Craig, Andy, John Rosenthal, and I sat down, we finally combed this whole process. The original law that was first put through, the reason why we had decided that the mayor vetoed it partly is because of administrative issues, because we found in fine-tooth combing law and actually going through it, that there were some incorrect references to either city departments or laws or things like that, so we amended it, we put it through. This is based upon other laws that the legal committee has, based, mostly in Saratoga Springs, that the legal committee has used and adopted, um, and we're hoping we also, not only did we change the references, but we've also changed the fee structure as well as we took out the $10,000 bond, which was initially in there to hold for any sort of maintenance. Those maintenance charges on any sort of properties which are currently vacant will now go to, just as the city tax rules. And the other thing is that, just so people aren't confused about this, is that when the time actually starts, it involves Craig Haye of Code Enforcement to send out a remediation letter to say that this property is actually vacant, and then once that is not remediated within thirty days, property is then determined to be vacant as a hundred and, 365 days after that, one year after that, um, and then the fees start kicking in. So, for people who are concerned about, you know, if this automatically be vacant, there is a year to pass. That has to pass.
Thank you. Uh, can I have an introduction and a second? Put this on our desks. Calvin? And Tiffany? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Old business. Anything the council would like to raise? First?
My comment, a combination of old business and new business.
Sorry?
But, um, uh, some of you may know and some of you may not know, but last year, in the last common council, we passed a resolution in support of a bill on Presbyterian Condo, creating a commission on it, and yesterday, Governor Trump signed the bill, so we are extremely proud, and Hudson is the first city to pass that resolution in support, and after that follows Syracuse, Yonkers, and Albany.
Thank you. Any other old business from the council? How about new business from the council?
Um, Rich, Peter Young and I are meeting with, um, the trustees of the Oakwood Cemetery up in Troy tomorrow to find out what they have done to help, um, turn their cemetery around, so to speak. Um, as we found, we found out in the finance meeting, and you can look at it with Open Gov, um, the website online, you'll notice that the cemetery fund is a totally separate account, there's money that goes into that fund, that it actually costs us quite a substantial amount of money every year at the cemetery just to maintain it. So, we're going to be looking, redoing some research with other cemeteries here in the area to find out how they have dealt with similar problems. So, ultimately, what I see happening is that some sort of, maybe friends at the cemetery, some sort of group that can somehow happen to come about to help either raise money or, you know, think about how to get, how to use the marketing slogan campaign which I've been wanting to use is how to get our cemetery out of the hole. Help support the cemetery, get us out of the hole. That's the plan. So, I'm going to just do, just because I'm working, slogan, just for that.
Thank you. Any other new entry?
It's about, it's a two, three hundred thousand dollars. It's a chunk of change, folks. The cemetery is a few hundred grand a year that goes into maintaining the cemetery, so, you know, this is, um, you know, it's a project that, you know, we want to deal with, I'll take this on because it's, you know, why not? Um, and, yeah, and hopefully we can figure something out, find out what other cemeteries have done. I'm sure we're not the first ones to have this issue, and we can see, I mean, the Oakwood, which is where Uncle Sam is buried, has a whole board of trustees that are there that manage the cemetery, and they do events and they have things like that, they're going to maintain it. So, maybe we could do such something here in the city of Hudson with our cemetery. Peter Young is coming with me because he did the Robert Gifford project up on the cemetery to help, um, put those stones back in place. Um, Robert Gifford was a painter here in the city of Hudson, he was a famous landscape architect, but anyway, so, yes. That's the plan.
In that same, in light of that, not only is Peter Young, in effect, joining a subcommittee, but Peter Spear will be joining the Department of Public Works Subcommittee on, with his Complete Street project. As the third citizen volunteer we've had this year so far, you know, I remember calling, asking you in the beginning of the year if anybody wanted to join a committee, they were welcome to. Of course, you can't vote since you're not elected, and of course, Mark Womackresz is here tonight, was the first to step up. So, you're always invited. If you have a burning issue that you're concerned with and you know the committee that deals with it, please volunteer. Rob?
Uh, in the finance committee tonight, we had a demonstration of Open Gov, which is the interactive budget program that is on the city website, it's under the treasurer's department. So, not only does Heather and her folks put the budget together on a monthly basis, which is a line item budget, but there's actually an interactive budget that's all done by graphs, so the finance committee got an overview of that. We're going to work with Heather and go and this fall, put some programs together at the library and at some other areas so that, you know, citizens can see how the budget is, how transparent it is, you can see the revenue coming in, you can see the expenditures going out, you can really click down into quite good detail as to where money is being spent and, you know, as we go through the budget for 2019 that's coming up and everything else that's going on, so just stay tuned for that.
Any other council comments, first?
I just want to, got a statement and recommendation, is that good?
Sure.
So, in terms of, uh, why we're here, you know, in terms of relocation for ADA compliant, um, I think, since I took office, since working with the mayor and working with this council, the door has been opened more. Is there work to do? Absolutely. This council passed a different resolution, um, which is, I think, a great thing. Oakdale, which was not, the bathrooms are not handicap accessible, the youth department installed handicap accessible porta-potties. Um, I know right now, and I know the mayor's been working on handicap parking for the senior center, which hasn't been there, so that door is being opened wider, is there, it should be open wide, I think, an ADA coordinator would be ideal because accessibility is not always about a ramp, and I don't want that misconception to be out there, that having a ramp, the accessibility is done, because accessibility also means those who are deaf, those who are blind, and other needs. So, when you open that door of accessibility, you have to think about everything, like this building here, this might be building that you think, but I think if there's a bathroom, is that handicap accessible? So, I don't know if this building was the best choice for the location. As a recommendation, I think, moving forward in the short term, um, I think there should be a policy put on the website by the council in terms of what is the process, in terms of relocating meetings or committees, who is responsible, so somebody who wants to go to a meeting knows who to contact to go to a meeting, and those council members need to ask the right questions. What do you need? Do you need a bathroom? What, what's your accommodations that you need? And make sure that there's a timeframe, you know, three, two to three weeks, public notice needs to be made, so I think that should be in the short term, something that should be done as soon as possible. So, that, at least that portion to be in place.
To address that, I'm pretty sure that the library and the firehouse are completely ADA accessible, and so far, I've managed to engage the library for our future informal meetings. They may be able to accommodate our formal meetings as well, up until December. I can't lock them in for the next year yet, but we'll see. But thank you for that.
And tell me, how, I'm sorry, how would we go about making, like you said, it's not just rents, so how would we go about making these meetings more accessible, I don't know, like, for people who are blind or deaf, like, how would, like, what are other things for people? Asking questions. If somebody, you know, that's why ideally, you know, some of you, an ADA coordinator would be perfect because they know the questions to ask, but what is your need? Because everybody's need is different. Um, you know, somebody who is deaf, you know, do you need, do you need a TTY? Do you need, do you need a sonographer? Do you require sign language? These are questions that, you know, when engaged, that should be asked. So, it's all about preference in terms of the individual and their needs.
Tiffany?
Well, that is wonderful that the council will take these steps, find a way to make city hall ADA compliant for meetings, you know, and the best way to find out what the people need, you know, don't wait till elections, not going to talk to your constituents. That's the simple way. If you have a great connection with your constituents, you know what they need and how to be accommodated, and I know for the peoples particularly in Providence Hall, they need a rent. Whether it's in the park or see.
On behalf of the public, unless there's anything else from the council?
Yes. Hi, Don Moore. Uh, two things. One, I wanted to express a considerable appreciation to Heather and to the finance committee and to the council for the fund balance policy. For anyone who is concerned about professionalizing this government and about transparency, this policy and setting standards for what a fund balance should be, fund balances, this is really, it's a huge advance, and you are much to be complimented for having achieved it. I know how hard and how long we've worked on it. It's really quite, quite an achievement. The other thing I would mention is, I'm just curious if you had inquired in terms of meetings of the courts building. When we put that together, um, one of the discussions we had with the Office of Courts Administration was using that, the courtroom for meetings in the evenings, and just, it hasn't been brought up.
Yeah, true.
Because it definitely is accessible and it's large enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll throw myself, please.
Midcross, I was at the DPW meeting last week. We need, uh, crosswalks, crosswalks between second, third, and state. It's unsafe to walk across there right now, so I'm asking you to get out some crosswalks out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to thank the council for supporting the John L. Edwards Resolution. The county has been waiting for you to do this, so now we can proceed with some plan to make something happen. There's a lot of what ifs, but there's also shared services that we're rewarded for doing. There's also There's also opportunities that I think we probably don't have any idea how many great things could happen. And moving forward, uh, I'm on that committee, so, thank you very much.
It's good, it sounds like one-stop shop. Sounds good.
Anyone else? Come on, you want to jury rounds?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?